Coming to the October 26th, uh, meeting of the Bloomington School Board. All members are present. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republican Party's Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, before we move approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask for a motion to cancel this evening's study session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of canceling this study session for this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And none opposed. Thank you. Now, I'd like approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed. Thank you. On, first, we have recognition of students, staff, and public. In this evening, we're going to recognize a Kennedy High School National Merit Commended Student. Um, I'd like to ask Principal Andy Beaton to step forward and say a few words about the program and introduce the student. Thank you.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki, pleased to be here tonight. Elizabeth Coleman is a National Merit Recommended or Commended Student, excuse me, but she couldn't be here tonight. She must be studying. So, I will talk to her tomorrow about how she owes me one, and I'm here for her tonight. She's an outstanding student. I think recently when I talked to her, I think her first choice is hearing about the University of Chicago where she's going to be going to school next year. She is involved in sciences and the arts. I think she's trying to decide which direction to go. But, it's too bad Elizabeth couldn't be here. But, it's nice to be recognized and I will pass it on to Elizabeth.
Thank you. And Director Sorm has a certificate if you'd pass that on to her too. We appreciate it. And thank you for coming.
I will. Thank you very much.
Um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the school board on an item that is not on our agenda this evening? Seeing no one come forward, I would like to make a statement about our curricular expectations. A requirement to our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom procedures, and et cetera. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I see a lot of students in the audience and I'd like to invite them to step up to the podium. I'm guessing you're all from Jefferson. And if you'd just tell us your name and your teacher. We'll start over here. Go ahead. Sure.
Um, I'm Jenna Greenwald and my teacher, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jessica and I go to Jefferson and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
Um, I'm Raquel Boujoie, I go to Jefferson and my teacher is Dan Storlein.
Um, I'm Ally Maney, I go to Jefferson and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
Hi, I'm Eric Gangno and I go to Jefferson and my student is Mr. Storlein.
Hi, I'm Mitchell Johnson, I go to Jefferson and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Nathan Varvel and, uh, Mr. Storlein is my teacher.
My name's Taylor.
Uh, my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
Hi, my name is Abaya Singleton and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
You're not all in one class, are you?
I'm Allison, I'm also in Mr. Storlein's class.
My name is Ebony Shakaford and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Akyla Deloney and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
My name is Ally Veerling and my teacher is also Storlein.
I'm Panmore and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Ozma Obdi and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Diana Marine and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
My name is Hannah Page and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Cal Gooby and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Sam Zed, my teacher is Storlein.
My teacher is Storlein.
My name is Davio and my government teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Amy Olsen and my teacher is Storlein.
I'm Sevier and my teacher is Storlein also.
I'm Alex and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Kelvin and everyone has Mr. Storlein.
My teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
My name is Shayna Malsum and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Alex Betcher and I have Mr. Storlein.
I'm Jeremy Hendricks and I have Mr. Storlein.
I'm Tyler and I have Mr. Storlein.
I'm Michael Bejic and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name's Alex Brown, Mr. Storlein is my teacher.
Hi, my name is Margaret Tebby and I have Mr. Storlein.
Hi, I'm Leah Darges and I have Mr. Storlein.
I am Sarah Horseman and I have Mr. Storlein.
I'm Erin Plink and I have Mr. Storlein.
Anne Fong-Storlein.
I mean, I have Mr. Storlein.
Thank you.
So, there was one that didn't have Mr. Storlein, right? Are you the only person in that class, or? Who, who didn't have Mr. Storlein, raise your hand. No? Was it everybody?
When, when is the paper due, guys?
End of the quarter, end of the third term. There's one more.
I have one more.
We have one more. We're all waiting on you. Plus why you're late.
Andrew Belvedere.
Who's your teacher?
Storlein. Thank you. Uh, students, at the close of our session or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the green agenda, um, from any one of our administrative cabinet, um, people that are sitting against the wall over there. And thank you for coming and tell Mr. Storlein thank you for filling up our audience. We appreciate it. That brings us to Part A. Uh, would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to do that? In a, in a second.
Okay.
Removing to approve Part A agenda.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. That includes our board business, our field trip approvals, our finances. And that's it for this week. Um, all in favor of approving the Part A of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. It brings us to Part B of our agenda. First, it's a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2015A, to refund general obligation school building bonds, 2006C. And our finance director, Rod Zifcovich, is here to talk us about, talk to us about that. Would someone like to make the motion?
Madam Chair. Of the School Board of Independent School District 271, State of Minnesota, as follows. The School Board has determined that it is necessary and expedient to issue general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2015A, to refund certain maturities of the district's $34,320,000 general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2006C. The sale of the bonds will be conducted in accordance with the bond sale guidelines attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Director Zifcovich?
Uh, Chair Barlatas, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is a process of elders and associates working in our behalf of looking at on a periodic basis where we can refinance our, our bonds, outstanding bonds, to reduce the interest which in, in, uh, in comparison will also reduce the, uh, debt service that we have to pay for the bonds in the future. This is the first of the process. We'll be coming back to the board in end of November with the actual sale documents themselves.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, thank you. Number two in Part B is an income contract with Northwestern Health Sciences University. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll take it. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the income contract with Northwestern Health Sciences University to provide instruction to Bloomington Career and College Academy students during the 2015-2016 academic year.
Second. Thank you. We have a second. And our Director of Community Services, Tamara Sevis, is here to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and School Board members. The resolution before you is to accept a contract with Northwestern Health Science University, and this is in partnership with our Bloomington Career and College Academy. And we will, we are working with them to expand our health sciences pathway. They've been a wonderful partner in exploring, again, what career opportunities are out there that have livable wages and stackable credits. So, they will be our partner with us in expanding our health science career pathways. And administration is recommending approval at this time.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Director Luda.
Um, the only thing that I had a, sort of, want to put a footnote on there for us to maybe monitor is it, when it says that we, we are paying them a certain amount of money, but it also says that we are paying for all the books and everything, and recently going through school, that can sometimes get to be a lot. So, I'm sure this will be fine, but just in case, we might, in the future, want to look at that and see if there's some sort of cap that we'd want to, that we'd want to put on there. Like I said, it'll probably be fine and reasonable, but just in case, we don't want to find ourselves unhooked for like forty grand for books.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Thank you. Third on our list this evening is an application for funds from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Would someone like to?
Result that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for grants to be used to pay athletic and activity fees for students who qualify.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to talk about this resolution.
Chair Barlatas, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board, this is actually a very similar looking resolution to one you had a couple of weeks ago, probably, because that was the Jefferson version, and this is the Kennedy version of the exact same thing. It's the, uh, foundation from the State High School League to provide financial assistance to students for activities and sports. Money comes from state tournament ticket sales. We find out later if, how, how much, or if we get funds from that, and when we do, we have a, a system to disperse those out to families and make sure they're aware of the, the opportunities. So, this is, this is for Kennedy.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
So, the number is the anticipated number of students participating in this that would be granted funds from, from High School League determiner at the end of the year? And then they send us the check?
Yeah, well, the High School League has a formula for determining the, the amount that gets redistributed back to school districts, and I don't know exactly how that works, but, uh, yeah, we find out soon how much we get, if, if we get any. You don't always get funds, actually.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next, we have approval of employment agreement extending the probationary period for a teacher. Director Sorm?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the employment agreement between the district and probationary teacher, Melissa Krauth, extending her probationary period.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Dick, right there. Uh, our Assistant Superintendent is here again to speak to this one.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and board members. I'll pinch it for HR Director Mary Burrows tonight on this one. A little more detailed background for folks in the audience and at home, you, you have in your board packet, Melissa Krauth is currently a non-renewed teacher with the district. She completed her probationary period on June 4th last, uh, this year and was non-renewed due to enrollment. Uh, she's acquired a temporary contract with us that begins on October 7th, or began on October 7th, and will go through the end of the school year. She's voluntarily agreed to waive her continuing contact rights in order to fulfill that temporary assignment for the, for the remainder of the year, uh, and agrees that it does not constitute a notice of recall and affect non-renewal status. Uh, this is just the way we have to do these things. We've, we've talked with her about it, obviously, and, uh, the BFT is also aware of this and, and is, and is supportive of it. And administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Did we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next, what we've all been waiting for, the enrollment report, 2015.
It's gonna be a little slowdown of the proceedings. Board Chair Barlatas, Superintendent Fujitaki, uh, thanks for having me here tonight. Uh, this is our annual, um, uh, presentation of the October Report, sometimes called the Enrollment Report. You can find this report and all the, uh, the last five years of reports on our website. What I like to do when we present this report is just hit a highlight or two on each page. Uh, the people, the audience for this report is our public. Sometimes you'll, you might refer to this report if you're looking at, uh, coming to the district, if you're looking at comparing schools and so on. If you, as you're, there's a lot of data in this report, so it's, it's really too much to go over in, in much detail right now. But, if, uh, if you needed a couple of takeaways from this next fifteen minutes, um, you might take away that we're a 10,000 student school district, 10,022 students at the time we took this snapshot. We are 48% ethnically diverse district, and we are 40% free and reduced lunch eligible district. All right, with that, I'm going to just walk you through a couple of items on each page. If we look at page three, page three emphasizes that idea of a snapshot. You know, at any given point, we have a fluid, uh, fluid number of students in the district. So, this number here represents what we call an October 1 snapshot. It happens to be, um, at a point where our, our free and reduced lunch numbers are probably at their lowest in the district based on, um, the free and reduced lunch application process. Our special ed numbers also fluctuate. Uh, on page four of the report emphasizes the student data site. This is the site that you might go to if you wanted to get today's most up-to-date numbers. This data site is updated overnight and includes things like our current enrollment, enrollment at each school, ethnic diversity numbers, free and reduced lun, lunch numbers, test scores, and so on. So, let's talk about some of those numbers. On page five, again, I'll highlight just one or two things. You can see that top grid shows, uh, I'll just walk you through, it shows last year's October 1 numbers, where we were, where I reported to the board that we were a district of 10,012 K-12 students. Uh, the second column shows this year's comparison numbers, 10,022. If you look all the way over to the last column of that top grid, you can see the difference from last year to this year's 10 students, for instance. That middle, that middle grid, uh, kind of breaks those numbers out by elementary schools. You can find your favorite elementary school there, and you can look at how it compares in line one from last year's snapshot number to this year's snapshot number. Also, the projection on which we base, uh, some of our budgeting is on line three there, and then the difference from projection. So, you can see schools fluctuate based on that spring projection number that Director Zifcovich presents to you. We can have a fluctuation as high as 33 students over the projection or 23 students under the projection. In that middle grid, you'll notice a column called SUN, second to the last column next to the totals. SUN is a program that's housed at Olson Middle School. It's students with unique needs. It really was created, it, what, it used to be integrated into many of our elementary schools. It was pulled together last year as part of the All-Day K effort, and so now that, since, since that, um, since those, those students are all gathering in one location, they have a unique school ID, and so we put them here. They're mostly elementary students, there's a few seventh and eighth graders, but we list them here, um, on the elementary numbers. Uh, the bottom of this grid shows the high schools, so you see there, um, I mean, the secondary schools, so you see the mid, three middles, the two high schools, again, last year's actual numbers and this year's actual numbers. You can stop me at any time if you see something there that you want to ask a question about. Page six is helpful if you're looking at, uh, class size. What is, how many fifth graders does the district have versus how many seventh graders versus how many seniors? Our current graduating class at the time of this snapshot is 709 students, uh, some of those behind me right now. And our incoming K class is 719 students this year. Page seven, eight, and nine, look at some of the demographic breakdown. So, first, if you look at the entire district, again, up in the upper left-hand corner of this table is 10,022 students. You'll hear me say that quite frequently. Uh, the groupings here are genders, the, the male/female gender breakdown, the ethnicity breakdown in that second set of data, which shows, again, we're a 48% ethnically diverse district. By comparison, that's 1% higher than last year. Another thing I sometimes suggest is to put, to, if you're gonna sit down for a night of data, you might grab this report and you might grab last year's report, put them side by side and do comparison. So, I'll, I'll give you some of those comparisons as we walk through here. The middle set of data here is EL, English learners in our district. That's, we're a 13% students who are EL students. That's the same percentage as last year. The next set of data there is free and reduced lunch eligibility. Last year, we were measuring at this point in time 41% free and reduced lunch eligible. This year, it's 40% free and reduced lunch eligible. Remember, that number fluctuates day over day based on the families that apply. You see a breakdown next of regular ed and special ed. We're a 13% special ed district. And then the last set of data there is the number of non-resident students who attend our schools. Uh, last year, that number was 6%, so we've, we've gone up a percentage point of non-residents who are choosing Bloomington Public Schools. If you're familiar with those categories, and here they are again, broken down by elementary school. So, I know each of you align yourself with a, a school or two or three, right? So, you might focus on the school that you tend to frequent when looking at these numbers, if that's helpful. It's good to know your school. We sometimes talk around the district office of being a student of enrollment. That is, know what our demographic strengths and weaknesses are, um, know what the status is of one school compared to another. Some of those demographics drive the kinds of programs that exist in those schools, the types of staffing that are in those schools, and so on. If I look, if I wanted to point a couple things out in this elementary page, I'm looking at that total column, the first column on the left. The ethnic diversity of our elementaries is slightly more ethnically diverse than our overall population. Remember, 48, we're a 48% ethnically diverse district. Our, our elementaries are 50% ethnically diverse. If you do the same comparison in EL, uh, we have 20% EL population across our elementaries, and 13% is our aggregate across K-12. The reason that makes sense is that students graduate out of EL programming. So, younger students tend to need more EL programming. Free and reduced lunch, uh, eligibility across the district is 40%, but at our elementaries is 4% higher, 44% in that column. Uh, special ed, uh, representation is about on par. Elementary, middle, and high school is 13% in all areas. Uh, and then the non-resident enrollment is 7% across elementaries. Do the same on slide nine for the middles and high schools. So, you might see there ethnic diversity of 45% as compared to the district, which is at 48%. EL status at 6%. Free and reduced lunch status at 36% compared to 40% across the district. Special ed percentage at 13. And non-resident enrollment is slightly higher at our secondaries. Might be due to our DA programs, might be due to, um, DA High School or some of the other programs that we have. Tried to take these tables of numbers the last couple of years and put them into, oh, yes, Mr. Bergstrom.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
You said jump in at any time, but...
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wanted to make mention on our page seven, the demographics of all schools. The, the one column that I didn't see was our homeless students. And I had asked that question earlier of Superintendent, and I want to say thank you to Superintendent Fujitaki for getting the number back to me. It turns out that we do have 150 students in the district that are homeless.
Yeah, 150 students across 10,000 student population.
Yeah, 10,022. And, i-if I may, just one, one more item. A homeless student doesn't look like a homeless student. A homeless student, um, is defined by someone who doesn't have a, a stable home to stay in. So, you might have somebody that stays one week at your friend's house on the couch or another week or et cetera, et cetera. And yet, uh, um, those students do exist in our community and in our schools. So, I just wanted to bring light to that particular staff.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, um, we tried to put the, the data in, in pages seven, eight, and nine into a graphical format on slide 10. Um, and so, I'll just walk you through, there's three pieces of data we're pulling about these schools. The two columns on the left are the two high schools, and then the three middles, and then the 10, 10 elementaries. The three pieces of data that we pulled here are the EL percentages, the ethnic diversity percentages, and the free and reduced eligibility. And then these schools within their category are sorted for, from the free and reduced perspective, just to give them some order here. So, you can see, for instance, if you looked at Ridgeview, which is the sixth column over, you would see, um, 27% ethnically diverse district. It's our, uh, least free and reduced lunch eligible school. Uh, and then that goes all the way to the right, Valley View Elementary, which is our highest free and reduced eligibility school. See some of the diversity across our district. If we looked at, oh, that stripy stuff isn't supposed to be in there, it's supposed to be a solid color. If we looked at the district-wide, uh, diversity profile, sometimes people look at graphics better than numbers. So, here we have, um, a representation of what that 48% ethnically diverse district looks like. 52% white. Uh, that number dropped one percentage point from last year to this year. The Hispanic and black, um, sections of this pie, each went up by a percentage point from last year to this year. The Asian Pacific Islander percentage went down, and the American Indian, uh, segment stayed flat. Those are federally defined areas that's, we use the, the, the words of the federal guidelines when we report this, these numbers. All right, so let's look at historic trends. Second half of the report is about, uh, over time. A couple of these pieces of data over time, so you can see the trends as Bloomington develops, as a district, or as Bloomington has, um, aged as a district. We look, first look at enrollment. We've had lots of enrollment conversations among the board. Here, you can see what that looks like over the last 10 years. We've gone from a district of 10,334 students in 2006, 2007, to today's current number of 1022. That represents an overall drop of 312 students. You might notice a flattening of the enrollment over those last six or eight years. If you remember Director Zifcovich, when he's come with demographic numbers, it's, it's what has been predicted, a flattening of enrollment with the potential of growth going out a few years. If we look at the 10-year, um, history on ethnic diversity on slide 14, you can see that we increment up each year by a percent or so. So, we've gone from 34% 10 years ago to 48% now, 14% growth over that time. And then more specifically in slides 15 and 16, and 17 are the school-by-school ethnic diversity trends over the, that same 10-year period. So, um, there's a lot of lines on this page, page 15. So, the top there, uh, if you can make it out, is Valley View Elementary. There's a set of, there's a short line there that just goes from the last two years. That, again, is the SUN program, Students With Unique Needs, that used, that's, again, those students, there's 29 students that used to be integrated into schools, into schools, but now they've been pulled out as their own school. The two schools that are clustered there next to Sun... The two schools that are clustered there next to SUN are Washburn and Indian Mounds. Then there's a middle cluster and then the bottom two in this graph are Hillcrest and Ridgeview. Yeah.
On relaxation, and this is a snapshot of October 1st. This only goes to 2015, 2016. I know a lot of times we've talked about trends and different things like this. Can you share, or whatever it is, maybe four or five years out, what some trends in this, say, particular diversity might be? Or would you rather go back to the book and check out information?
Yeah, so we, we try to divide, we try to divide the, you know, what we do really is we keep track of the students that are here in the Tech and Information Department. The projections and the demographics come, or the projections and the business projections come out of the business office. And so if you have a specific question, or if anybody has a specific question, I typically write those down. We refer them to Rod. We do the research on the four or five-year projections and then we would report back. So I don't have the information immediately available to me.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding this 15. So that, when you look at, is that Hillcrest or the, yeah, that's Hillcrest. So it goes in 2011, '12 from 20% to 28%. That's a big jump. And if I remember well, that 2011 was when the 10 students per, you know, the transfer number of students from other schools was not a maximum, not more than 10 students per school, right? So how did, how did this happen, that huge?
I think the changes you're seeing around the '11, '12, and '12, '13 school year are mostly about the boundary changes. That was the year we changed boundaries in the district and that's where you see a lot of these numbers shift a little bit. We also, in that same timeframe, expanded the DA program. We began to move down a grade at Oak Grove Elementary and Ridgeview, added a grade of DA, and then we made room. So those are, a lot of those students are coming in from other parts of the district or from outside the district. And so that's, that's mostly what the shift that I would attribute to that two-year span.
Because that huge jump, it's only, you can only see it with Hillcrest. Right here, as I look at this, it's only for Hillcrest. So I'm just, I was just wondering how that happened and it was such a big jump. It was like a huge number there. Rod, maybe?
I can add to that also. In those two outlying years, we had a large, very large kindergarten classroom at Valley View. And so we chose to go over the 10 limit and go up to a 20 limit. So for those two years, there were 20 or somewhere close to 20 students that were going from Valley View to Hillcrest.
Okay. That explains it. Thank you.
If you look at slide 16, this is again, we're still in the area of ethnic diversity across our three middle schools. And you can see those trends, each trending upward over that 10-year span. Slide 17 shows the same 10-year trend for high schools. Our high schools from last year to this year went up by 2%, became 2% more ethnically diverse, going from 42%. If you were to look at the slide last year to 44% this year, you can see each school went up by a percentage point. The last series, 18, 19, 20, are that same 10-year span, looking at free and reduced lunch eligibility. So in slide 18, you see an 11% growth in this area over that 10 years, from 29% in the '6, '7 school year to 15, '16, 40% in 15, '16.
Excuse me, John, just quick.
Sure.
I'm looking at my notes from when I went over this earlier. And I'm just curious, is it, do you think it's leveling off? Do you think it's going down? I mean, it went down a percentage, but would you call that leveling or?
Yeah, so Rod and I had this conversation. And part of the challenge of doing a snapshot is the way the free and reduced lunch application process works. If you looked at the projections comparatively from last year to this year from our snapshot, that shows a leveling off of 41 to 40%. Rod's numbers actually show a slight growth based on, we still have actually about four weeks of addition before the state takes their snapshot of free and reduced lunch numbers. And so I would say it's a leveling off.
And then...
One view shows it slightly down, one view shows it slightly up.
How much would this trend mirror the health of the community? You know, a robust jobs market? Are we, if people are able to go back to work, find steady income, are we seeing a reduction in free and reduced eligibility or is that no correlation?
Yeah, I'm not an expert in that area. Maybe, maybe Rod might have some information. But that seems to me to make logical sense. When the economy's better, people are doing better, bringing home better, more income, then we would expect these numbers to go down. But I don't know exactly. I'm not sure how I would research your question, but I could take a stab at researching your question and producing an answer if you wanted.
Okay, well, don't spend a lot of time. I'm still smiling because you accused me of being logical.
Page 19, then, does this free and reduced lunch eligibility trend over the 10 years for our elementaries? The order is similar to the order with our other demographic areas. Valley View is that top line there. And the bottom two are Hillcrest and Ridgeview. Again, you can see them going back and forth. Last year, this slide was at 45%. This year it's down 44%. That can be just a few students that moved that by one percentage point. Slide 20 shows the trend for middle schools. And slide 21 shows that same trend for Kennedy and Jefferson. Lastly, page 22 is an index. Again, we publish this report online. The audience is often our public, you know, people that don't live and breathe the school system. And so we try to put it in a, in a format that is readily available, easy to read, can be printed and standalone. So if you're ever looking at for one of the last five enrollment reports, you can just go to any of our webpages, find that search field, put in enrollment report, and it'll take you to the Tech and Info Department page and you can download this same PDF. I'm making a few editing changes between the report you're looking at and the one that'll be published tomorrow or the next day. But really, it's just footnotes to say, you know, to redefine SUN on some pages and to move some stuff around. None of the numbers will change. The people who have proofed it, it's been passed around quite a bit now. The people who have proofed it have all said, yep, makes sense. Haven't found any adding errors.
Thank you.
Any final questions for me?
Comments, questions?
Just want to say thanks for the energy and effort that was put into this. It's a, it's a, it's a large document, takes a lot of energy. And I know everybody wants to make sure that you get it right. So just my thanks to the team that worked on this.
Yeah, I'll credit Alyssa Miller. Alyssa's in her third year with us and she replaced Vicky Daly, who's kind of a legend around here. And Alyssa's done a great job of keeping our data clean, keeping our numbers up to date. She works with the business office quite a bit on the projections. And, you know, whenever we need this type of information, she's able to pull it accurately pretty quickly. So credit goes to, mostly to Alyssa. I prettied it up a little bit.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Good bet.
Anyone else? Dr. Bennett?
Yeah, I was just looking at this October 1st number. Is this what the state funds us on, is based on our student enrollment on October 1st?
No, we actually get funding on daily enrollment numbers. But October 1st has been kind of a traditional time to do this, this report. We set our, we set our program numbers off and off of this October 1 report. For instance, if we buy, and in my department, we buy licenses for things based on this report. So we'll often get charged for, for the license for a piece of software based on the number of students in your district. And this is, these are the numbers we would use. It's nice to have it be the same time every year so that we can compare one year to the next because you can see pretty wide fluctuations based on something that happens in the district or something that is happening in the economy or a program that gets added or changed. So having it in roughly the same timeframe each year is helpful to us. But it's not tied directly to a year-long funding program.
Okay.
But we do a lot of planning around these numbers. And you'll, you'll hear often quoted the exact enrollment number of 10,022 students now.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because I'm sure our enrollment today is no longer 10,022.
Go to the data site and you'll see it's either up a few or down a few from that.
Okay, so I was wondering about that. Now, also, since our projections were off by 75 students, I'm wondering, does that change our enrollment projections for the years to come? Or is that, have we done that yet?
The project, as we update the projections as overall, it will go up. But if you look in more in detail of our projections versus where it came in, a lot of it is at the secondary level, especially at the high school. So you're only really looking at a two- or three-year type of growth that you'd be able to use those numbers through versus if all of a sudden our kindergarten was up 40 or 50 students, it would have a big impact over a long period of time.
Yeah, well, when I got this report on Thursday, from my exciting Thursday evening, I looked at it side by side with our demography report from last year. And what was interesting is that this was supposed to be our lowest year out of the next 10 when it comes to kindergarten numbers. So even, and she was predicting that we would lose 20, 30 students and we actually gained 10. So every year after this, supposed to be increasing by, and so another 10 years, we should have, we should be at 10,200. So I just don't know if that's going to change our projections as well since kindergarten numbers are going to be rising in the future as well.
I think overall, you can't take a snapshot of one year and you can't take a snapshot of October 1 numbers. A couple of years ago, when you, John, if you go back to that, this slide, we had annual numbers. The overall enrollment, yep. So if you look at this right here, we had in '11, '12, we were at 10,313. By the end of the year, most of that was gone. You have those type of fluctuations. So to look at a 30 to 40 student change in enrollment at one period of time, I'd rather maybe take a look at this in probably January, February timeframe to see if a lot of those students are still around in the overall concept.
Okay, all right, thanks.
No, I don't want to question your data because I know how sensitive that can be in the technology world. But like, I was on the data site and right now it says we're at 9,979. I mean, so would that make sense that in the past three weeks, you'd see shifts? I mean, does it fluctuate that much monthly, month-to-month basis?
Yeah, it can. Plus the way, the way these programs are defined, you know, this remembers a K-12 report. It doesn't include, well, that doesn't, I guess I was going to make a point, but it does, it's not really pertinent here. It can fluctuate that much and it can, it could also be up the same number.
And then this is actual bodies. This isn't the formula they use to determine, you know, high school students are 1.2 or whatever. This is the actual number of students or is this the?
This is called seat count.
Okay.
So it's kids sitting in seats. So if you have a student that is in a class for half the year and then leaves, we only get funding for a half the year on that student, even though on October 1, we're showing that as a full student. So you usually, if we took a look at the K-12 numbers at the end of this year, we would show probably somewhere between a 50 to 60 student drop, mainly in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade.
The numbers you're looking at on the data site, there would be, you know, that, those students have a schedule at Jefferson tomorrow morning. They're actually counted as enrolled as of this moment in time.
And then the thing that, as you were going through, that sort of, my eye, caught my eye was that our current ninth, 10th, and 11th grade are all 850-ish. And K-1 and 2 are all, you know, 700, 750. So it looks like the trend going forward isn't that we're going to have a ton more unless we start having some higher kindergarten classes.
Also remember, though, in going from eighth to ninth grade, we usually pick up 50 to 75. This year, we had a over 100 that we picked up.
Okay. So that's good.
All right. Typically see a bump when we move from trimester one to trimester two because you think about how families make their moving decisions or if a family is split across two households. The time to move would be a natural break in the school year. So we'll see bumps at different times based on, on winter break, for instance, or spring break. We might see those numbers jump by 20. All right.
So just clarification, I'm looking at data site. And are we looking at, is this considered the 2015 year or 2016 year?
2016.
So then the actual today enrollment is 10,008.
Oh, 10,008, oh, okay.
And then also to Director Oliva's point that we have smaller elementary school numbers. If you look at the demography report and you look at birth rates, those are, this year, what, kids enrolling in kindergarten this year were born in '09, '10, which was like the height of the recession, which was the lowest Bloomington birth rate since 2002. And every year since then, birth rates have been increasing. And it's about, the last year that we have data on, which was 2013, the birth rates were about 115 kids more than our current enrollment. So if our capture rate stays the same, our kindergarten classes will be rising over the next couple of years.
Good.
Students of enrollment.
I told you we were looking forward to this. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just to clarify information that we heard at the, the joint meeting that we had with the city council, there was, if I am not wrong, somebody made the comment that we had less students in kindergarten enrolling in schools in the east side, less students than in the west side. Am I right? Somebody had mentioned that, that we actually had less students this year in the east than in the west. So I was just curious to see where we are at now, if you don't have that answer right now, but if you can look at that and see if anything changed. And also, I wanted to ask if you know, in terms of demographics, when it comes to diverse students, you know, how many of those do we have in kindergarten? What is the percentage of diverse students in kindergarten enrolled this year? And how different it is from previous years?
As we see...
A diversity breakdown of kindergarten students?
Yes, only kindergarten students.
Okay.
And...
And the kindergarten, just as like a, what we are looking at and we've been looking at for a while is that we have noticed at both Washburn, Valley View Elementary, and Indian Mounds that their kindergarten classes are smaller than they have been in the past. So I don't know if it's really that there's less kindergarteners on the east side. It might be just that we have the pool of students within there. We need to look at it a little more of, in examples, talking to Valley View Elementary is they've had a closed campus to not having students come in from other districts because they were so full. We might have to look at it now of having that being open, that they can bring in students from Richfield or other school districts. So it gives us an opportunity. And then we also just need to look at overall of, you know, is it the base of students that we have for each of these schools? Or is it, is it that they are transferring to other places or they're not coming here? One of the things is kind of back to Director Bennett's comment about where we are in projections. You know, projections and budgets are all inaccurate once you make the first, put it on a piece of paper. When we looked at shifting things a few years ago on boundaries, we thought we had a lot of things shifted out. And now we're showing that on some of the east sides, they're a little bit lighter than some of the kindergartens. So you're never going to be exact. You're never going to know. That's why we need demographers and other people to be watching this on a regular basis to make... to be watching this on a a regular basis, to make sure that we make decisions ahead of time versus all of a sudden get caught like some districts do, where all of a sudden it's falling off the table before they react to the situation.
Yeah. I'm also curious to know, you know, from those students that transfer from other school districts, do we know what percentage also we have that are diverse students? What percentage of our transfer students are diverse students is what I, what I'm asking.
I can get that.
Please, yeah, it's curious to know, hope things are happening. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mary Nunn, thank you both for your information.
Thank you very much.
We do enjoy it. They bring the sharp board member reports.
And go, go first. Want to report that just before our meeting tonight, our Youth Advisory Council met, and I will not go into too much detail, as the chair of that particular committee, Rick Oliva, I'm sure is is waiting to give his, his report. I was, had a lot of fun last week, was honored to spend some time over at Poplar Bridge Elementary to see their STEAM program. We often hear about STEM, but they've added the A, which is arts. So it's science, technology, engineering, art, and math. I'd like to give a big thanks to Mrs. Volbrecht's fourth-grade class, just for letting me stand and listen in the doorway as they, um, uh, talked about what they had learned. So there, you you walk into the, to the school, it was from nine-thirty to eleven-fifteen, or something like that, I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday. And in the hallways, the students were, they had what they call comeback cans. There was a rubber band in the middle and some washers on them. And if the students had adjusted the tension to this, to the rubber band just enough, when you roll it forward, the, the washers would wind the rubber band so that the can would magically come back to you. And so they were learning in three dimension, in three-dimensional space about science and technology. And other kids, you had little loop-de-loops with some, some marbles going down a path. Other kids were working with water. And everywhere you went, you saw the students engaged and the the staff sort of standing around, just saying, you know, "Great job, isn't that fun?" And I listened in to Mrs. Volbrecht's fourth-grade class. So I just want to say thank, that was a, that was a wonderful thing to see. It's really neat to do that. From there, I went over to Norman Hill Hills Elementary for the, for the marriage of the letters Q and U. And that was a lot of fun. They have this mock marriage where they were in the media center, and, um, a couple, a couple of the staff got together, one was the bride, one was the groom, one was Q, one was U. And then there were a lot of, a lot of fun things said by the principal, Andy Volmuth, who was sharing what you can do when you blend the letters Q and U, and what words are spelled with Q, what words are spelled with U, and how they work together. This is all in, in, um, part of their, their learning style over there. They they do stress a lot of reading, as do all of our, our elementary schools, and of course, spelling. So this was a wonderful thing. And they've been doing this for, I think, nine or ten years. So it's a lot of fun to see. Director Soram and I went to MSBA training for superintendent evaluation. I want to say thanks to Jim for driving, because I don't think I could have found the spot. This was really interesting. It was an evening presentation for the Minnesota School Board Association, which is MSBA. It's the first time that I had gone to evening training. And Jim and I were trying to, to figure out, we know for sure there was one superintendent in there, there may have been two. But just by the questions, the, the one person was asking, we, we felt confident there was a superintendent that was helping all the superintendents in the district with, with that, that person's comments. So it was kind of fun to, to listen. And of course, we, we learned a lot. I'm sure Jim will share when he gets to his, um, report. Had lunch at Kennedy. I don't think Andy's still here, but went over and had lunch at Kennedy. It was Taco Day, if that was Tuesday or Thursday, whenever it was. Anyways, I was excited to see that, that they had jalapenos. You know, I, I'm Swedish, but I like spice. So it was, it was a lot of fun. And ended up sitting with a couple of ninth-grade gals. They were way at the end of the table, nobody was sitting with them. And I, I, I find myself gravitating towards the students that, that end up sitting alone, and introduced myself and asked permission to sit there. So I don't feel as though I was interrupting their lunch, and we had a good conversation. So it was nice to, um, nice to interact with the students and, and have my jalapenos over at Kennedy. Also, it was a pleasure to help, um, help serve dinner to the teachers and the staff right here at Oak Grove Middle last week, after the parent-teacher conferences, which are in the gymnasium, which are over there. We were down in the lunchroom, which is back over here, and I was able to lend a hand to the PTA group. Many thanks to the PTA for, for hosting that event and for making sure that our teachers and the staff had enough to eat so that they could get a little bit of energy and go back for the second round of parent-teacher conferences. Was privileged to attend the Fall Festival. This is put on by the Bloomington-Richfield Parent Advisory Council. The Fall Festival was over at Central Middle School, that is in, in Richfield. It's on Seventy-first and Elliott, I think it is. I, I think, if you get to Seventy-first and Elliott, you'll be close. It was a lot of fun. It was a costume contest for the little kids, some, some candy, some trick-or-treating. And then they had some Disney characters. They had Spider-Man, oh, I'm, I'm blanking out on the characters, but there were a couple of other characters that you could have pictures taken. So the little kids were all lined up, getting their pictures taken and having a blast. And last but not least, it was great to see so many of Mr. Sorline's students. I don't know if any of you guys were there. BFT hosted a candidate roundtable, and one of the tables had ten or twelve of Mr. Sorline's cla- class there. And you guys were all active and engaged, and it didn't take, when I got to your table, it didn't take too much prodding to get you to ask questions and to get, get rocking. So it was a lot of fun, and thanks for, for stepping in and, and filling one of those tables. So with that, I'll let the rest of the board members report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd say a report that the calendar committee met today, and we, we got the feedback back from the sites of the three options that they were given for the calendar. And there was more favorability towards one of the options with some recommendations for tweaking. So we did the best tweaking we could for the option they liked the best, and it is now going to go to the superintendent cabinet review, and building principals, and PTSA council, and, um, LMC. And then we will be voting on it in November twenty, the November twenty-third meeting. And just want to remind everyone out there watching, everyone in this audience, that next Tuesday is election day. If you're eighteen, make sure you go vote. We have school board and city council and mayor elections, and that's it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things to report. Policy committee met. We have a goal, the board had set a goal to review our policies regularly. We're looking at twenty a year. We're going to attempt twenty-three this year. We've al- already reviewed three, we have twenty left at, at our meeting. We did policy four-oh-eight, eight-oh-eight, four-thirteen, four-twenty-six, four-sixteen, one, seven-oh-two-two, seven-oh-two-three, and seven-oh-seven. For the most part, what we discussed was just if, if we weren't already using MSBA language, using MSBA language, or adjusting the policy that we had to what the current language was. There were a couple of things. One was, and I'll mention this, so that way when the policy comes from the entire board. The policy four-thirteen deals with harassment and violence. And the suggestion is to review it annually, because the different classes that get added can change annually. So for instance, right now, it says can't, uh, policy districts maintain learning and working environment that is free from harassment and violence on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital salus, marital status, fa- familial status, status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation or disability. I had, I had actually initially objected to this. I said, it should just say, uh, we are working, uh, we want to have a working environment that is free from harassment and violence, period. HR director was saying, however, there are federally mandated, federally classified classes that we have to use specific language. And so if we wanted to have something that was more encompassing, we would want to look at an additional policy. So I don't know if that's something that we would look at in the future, but when it comes up, if that is the question that you have, I had already asked that one. Um, Youth Advisory Council met earlier. I thought we had a great meeting, it was very productive. Some of those students are still here with us now. I, I think some of the takeaways were that the students are extremely involved in their schools now, especially in the areas of improving school climate and doing community service projects such as blood drives, food drives, partnering with other students to make the school a better place. What we're looking at is creating more collaboration and communication between the board and the students. Had an opportunity to serve lunch over at Ridgeview. I think something that Director Bergstrom had talked about often is the waste that happens at lunch, and I wanted to say, over at Ridgeview, they take that very seriously. My job was to cut apples, and I was to make sure that I did not cut more apples than were going to be taken by the students that were in line. So you'd count up line, the, the students, and I actually got it wrong on the first round that came through, as I said, okay, there's, we have this many students left, I'll cut up apples for each student. But I wasn't taking into consideration that not every student would take a slice of an apple. So on the next group, she said, that's okay, these ones will brown, and no one will eat them. But on the next group, just know, just, when you see five or six left, ask them if they would like an apple before you slice. So that is being taken care of. I also went to the Ridgeview. We are, all the board members are liaisons to different schools and sites. Uh, one of my liaison schools is Ridgeview Elementary. I attended their PTA meeting, and one of the exciting things happening there is they installed a Gaga ball pit. And the principal there says, every school should have a Gaga ball pit. I went out to recess also and saw that these kids, everybody is involved, everyone had something to do. The Gaga ball pit, basically what it is, is it's, it's a fenced-in area, and it's like dodgeball, but you aren't throwing the ball, you hit the ball with an open hand. And so you aren't hitting people hard, and it, and you'll have twenty, thirty kids in this pit all at once. And if you get hit with the ball, then you just, you know, you jump, and then it just goes back and forth until you get hit with the ball. And it was just so much fun, and all the kids were involved, and there was no fighting and arguing. Everyone knew the rules, and everybody just kind of did what they were supposed to do. And he said, if, uh, if everybody could have, have this, we should definitely support that. So, um, I think, yeah, so we did policy, the Youth Advisory Council, lunch, that, I think that's all that I have to report for now.
Okay. So you were not here last Monday, but I was. I attended the Pathways Advisory Committee last Monday. And during the meeting, members had an opportunity to listen more about the Bloomington Career and College Academy Program and the curriculum update from our Executive Director of Community Services, as well as the more information about the HAB and the Personalized Learning Plan by our Executive Director of Technology and Information Services. Assistant Superintendent was there too, of course. And it was just great to be there. It was interesting to see how, um, it's great to see how our parents and community members are getting so involved in this committee and want to know more. You know, they got a lot of information that they, that we got in, in about three hours, they got in in like half an hour. So they did have definitely a lot of questions, and they're gonna have a lot of questions as we continue to meet. And then I attended, uh, both of the, the candidates forums, one that was sponsored by the Bloomington Federation of Teachers. And what was really unique about this forum was the participation of our students from the student government, from our, both our high schools. And also, the Somali Parent Network, they hosted another candidate forum. So it's just great to see the participation that we keep having from different groups in the, in our school community. And that's all I have, I know. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, it's too bad all the students left, because I just wanted to impress them with, one of the policies we have on transportation is sixty-five pages long. So if any of you are interested in coming to, when we review it, that'll be really, really fun.
Interesting.
And as Dick had mentioned, we do have the, we have a superintendent evaluation workshop, and we'll be having, as soon as the elections are over, probably in first, second week in November, we'll have a superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting in order to lay it out. We've got a lot of information and good templates and formats to use, where it talks about the superintendent goals, and it also then talks about board goals also, so that we have to do some of those types of things. And so we're well on our way with what we have, but everybody's getting away from the ratings of five, four, three, two, one, and making it more objective and, or subjective, I should say, and maybe some less questions. So it's going to be an interesting format. I think you all did receive last year, the, the, an outline of our superintendent evaluation from MSBA, and we'll probably use a hybrid of that and the one that Dennis Cheesebrow has presented also to us. So it'll be coming up. I served lunch at Indian Mounds, and it was really fun, because I was the one who got put on the sour cream or the salsa sauce on the fajitas that they had that particular day. And I think all the schools had, on that Tuesday, had fajitas. And it was, it was fun to paint little faces on them at the time. So being on a school board is a lot of fun.
Okay. I also served lunch, um, I served lunch at Hillcrest, but it was very nice, because my little neighbor girl came through the line and recognized me, so that was kind of fun for me. I also attended the rally at Hillcrest and Washburn both, and a PTSA meeting at Hillcrest. When I was at the rally for Washburn, it just happened to be Unit National Unity Day, to wear orange, to stand up against bullying. And so it was really great to see the entire area was kind of a sea of orange of students that were, that were doing that. So they really embraced it there, so that was nice to see. I also attended the carnival at Washburn Friday evening. A great turnout, it was very well-attended. So hopefully, it will be a good success for their fundraiser, but it was also a great event for families, because it was very busy. I also had the Bloomington-Richfield Community Education Services Advisory Council. And the presentations there were the, from the Learning Exchange, and then from Richfield Ready, which is Residence Encouraging Asset Development in Youth. And I also attended the teacher negotiations last week. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, I'm not the only one. I served lunch too. I mean, you're not the only ones. I served lunch at Jefferson, and it was Taco Day, actually. And I also wanted to tell everybody that tomorrow, Bloomington United for Youth is having their annual meeting, which is kind of their reorganizing, you know, looking at what's going on. And we're always looking for youth. So if anybody that's in the audience would be interested in joining Bloomington United for Youth, it would be tomorrow from three to five at City Hall, in that storage room. But you could find it, just ask at the desk. We'd love to see you. Thank you. Pardon?
MacLeod.
Oh, MacLeod, thank you. The MacLeod Room. Supercented?
Can we, we have one more. Um, since, since the two of you didn't say it, I just wanted to say that Director Bartolata and Director Bennett and myself, all are MSBA delegates, delegates for their assembly coming up this fall, where we set their legislative priority, and all three of us were selected to do that. So we'll be doing that in November and December.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, now, supercended?
Thank you. I have three things. First, Lights On After-School Events are hosted by communities throughout our country. These events are held in October and November of each year, and their purpose is to support and raise awareness for after-school programs. For our district in Bloomington, the ki- our Kid Safari Program host, will host our Twelfth Annual Lights On After-School Family Event. This will be held on November sixth, which is a Friday. This will be held on November 6th, which is a Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Washburn Elementary School. At this event, there will be carnival games, a dance contest, a family photo station, food, refreshments. And representatives from the Bloomington Police Department and Fire Station will be there. So, the public is welcome to attend. The second topic I have is, a few weeks ago, I spoke at the Bloomington Retired Educators Association Luncheon. It is a group of about 50 retired teachers and principals. And my talk was about an update on the school district. They're very interested and excited with what we're doing, but what was most interesting is that they're aware of so many things that continue to go on in our school district. So, they are engaged. And the last topic is, I will be speaking to the residents of the Friendship Village in the coming weeks about the school district. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Is there any other business coming for us tonight? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.